I'm calling the Planning Commission meeting of April 25th to order. Welcome, everyone. We're going to do a few ministerial items and then I'll explain how we're going to proceed tonight. The first item on our agenda is a roll call. Ms. Bailey?
Commissioner Sayoc?
Here.
Commissioner Bourgeois?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tausford?
Here.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Here.
And Chair Jensen?
Here. And would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, united in this whole with liberty and justice for all. Proceeding with our ministerial items, the next thing is the approval of the minutes for April 11th. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Tausford, you have a motion?
No, I don't have a motion, but I was...
Do you have a motion? Before you say, is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Commissioner Bourgeois moves approval. Is there a second? Second? Commissioner Erickson, you're raising your hand. Yes. Commissioner Erickson, seconds. Now Commissioner Tausford.
Yes, I was not at the April 11th meeting, but I did familiarize myself with the minutes and the meeting, so I think I can vote.
And I also was not present at the April 11th meeting, but did review the materials, and I'm going to vote as well. So all in favor of approving the minutes of April 11th, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes unanimously. The next item is written communications. We do have one desk item on item number two, and I realize it's lengthy, but for commissioners' information, really what you're looking at is the correction regarding the nature of the property adjacent to the project proposal and the two, 41 and 42, additional conditions. The rest of the conditions that are contained in the desk item are the same as your staff report. But if you need more time to review that, let me know before we get to item two. Next item, again ministerial, is item number one. It's requested continuance, and that is 16828 Kennedy Road, Architecture and Site Application S-11096. And the request is a little unusual. It's a request to continue it to a date uncertain, and that's because the commission needs to take an action with respect to the item rather than the applicant isn't withdrawing it, we're not denying it. If we want to allow the applicant to renotice the item and put it on a future agenda and renotice it properly so that it can be publicized by the town and proper notice put out, then our motion would be, as I understand it, to continue the item to a date uncertain until the applicant is ready. So given that explanation, does anyone have any questions about that? Seeing none, is there a motion? Commissioner Sayoc?
I move to move item number one to a date uncertain.
Is there a second? Commissioner Tausford?
I will second that.
Any discussion regarding the motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. And for the public and members of the audience, the item, if and when it comes back to us, it will get renoticed, so you'll know what day it might come before you if you're interested in it. The next thing we do is that all of the commissioners also serve on different subcommittees. There are various subcommittees in the town that deal with different things, the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, the Historic Preservation Committee, the General Plan, the North Forty Advisory Committee. And so to keep all of our fellow commissioners informed and members of the public informed, we do give reports. So I'm going to ask either Commissioner Bourgeois or Commissioner Sayoc. Commissioner Bourgeois, to give us reports on the subcommittees you serve on.
Thank you, Chair Jensen. The General Plan Committee met earlier this evening, and we were, we've actually completed our review of the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone Design Guidelines and Development Standards. We've been going site by site, giving a detailed analysis to each of the sites. The two we had to finish up tonight were two sites on Oka Road. Those are completed, and the next steps for the committee include going through the design guidelines for affordable housing in town. So that'll be, take place at our two May meetings.
And would you or Commissioner Sayoc please summarize for us the North Forty meeting that happened last night?
Okay. The North Forty Committee meeting did occur last night from, I believe, six to eight. And last night's meeting, again, this is in a series of many meetings that have been shared with the public. Last night was specifically to look at six categories of land use and to see if those categories fit within the guiding principles that the Town Council had set. Those were residential, office, retail, recreation and entertainment, restaurant, and Commissioner Bourgeois, I'm missing out on the sixth one. Anyhow...
Office? Hotel?
Hotel. Excuse, there you go, hotel. And so those, those items that were under discussion are going to be summarized, and those minutes are available to the public. There is another meeting that will be scheduled, but at the time, we didn't have that, but it will be publicized, and I encourage everyone to please attend.
Thank you, Commissioner Sayoc, and just preliminarily, though you'll need to check websites and notices, preliminarily, the meeting looks like it may be on May 15th, the next meeting on that, if you're interested. Did any other committees meet? Commissioner Erickson?
The Historic Preservation Committee met this afternoon, considered a request to allow the addition of a first floor and cellar at a residence on Almendera Street, which they took favorable action to allow the applicant to pursue.
Thank you, and you see me diving under the table because the little electronic noise can be caused by your electronic device if you get close to our microphones. So all, any of you that have your device in the audience, we'd really appreciate it if you'd put it on silent. I know it's a bit much to ask you to turn them off, but if you put them on silent, we'd really appreciate it. Just to give you an explanation, I see a lot of you that have attended meetings in the past, but the Planning Commission is a body that's appointed by the Town Council to make decisions regarding land use issues in the town, anything from a major development like a planned development to a second-story addition on a house. We follow the guidelines and principles and ordinances and policies of the town in trying to do that the best way that we're able, and it's helpful for us to have the input of the members of the public and the applicant, and those may be opposed to a project or in favor of it. So we take public testimony, and the way we organize that is that we first allow the applicant to be before us, and a one designated person or however many people they have on a particular project may take up to five minutes cumulatively to address that project, and then there'd be questions by the commission. Then other people have up to three minutes to speak. We are interested in everyone's input, however, if you have heard your opinion or your position stated, consider whether or not you want to repeat it or make a new point so that everybody, we have time for everybody to be heard and we have an efficient meeting. We also have a part of the meeting which we're going to have tonight, which is called verbal communication. At that time, anyone who's present in the chambers may speak on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda for up to three minutes, and your comments will be timed. I understand there's a presentation that we're anticipating tonight, but I also have two other cards, and I should remind you, if you're going to speak to us, located on the back of the benches that are in front of you are these buff cards. If you'd please fill one out, that gives us a record of who's talked. We put it in our minutes, and we know what's happened for a record. So we'd appreciate if you're going to speak that you'd fill one of those cards out. So I have two so far, and if there's somebody else that's going to talk, if you'd at least pass one over to our secretary while you're speaking or after you complete your comments, we'd appreciate it. So I know that there are people that would like to speak to us about Ray Davis this evening. I also have two other cards who may or may not want to speak to us about Ray Davis. So those persons, the people that want to talk about Ray Davis, I'm just asking by a nod or a finger, one or two, would you like to go first, or would you like to wait for the other comments? First, okay. So I have a card from Lee Quintana, and I have a card from Christine Curry. So Ms. Curry, do you want to come forward? And you have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Christine Curry. I reside over the hill in the 831, 1013 Cedar Street. I'm here because our friend Ray Davis passed away, and we feel as though, as a tireless champion of the hillsides and such an amazing proponent of this amazing community that you live in, it only felt right and just to give him some time and to, and just to remember him, because he was an incredible force of nature, as you all know. And what he brought to the table was a certain amount of accountability within our local political system and the decision-making system that you all are a part of each and every day, and I applaud you, each and every one of you, for what you do. The great thing about Ray is that he did the homework. You know that. He kept you on your toes. You guys came here knowing that he was going to show up. He was a force of nature to be reckoned with, and I miss him, and I know this community misses him, and I know that from the emails and the photos, the beautiful photos that I can't share with you tonight, that Alistair Dallas was able to share with me. I just want to, I want to remember him, and I'd like to have a moment of silence at the end of kind of my spiel here, so if you'll just kind of bear with me. He was a brave supporter of so many things, the sidewalks that went in around Blossom Hill School. You know, he had his short list, and he had a certain way, if you will, of portraying the importance of these issues, and he, he was like no one else. I mean, I think, I think you will all concur. We'll all, we'll all remember when somebody says, "Citizen Ray." We will all have that vision of passion and commitment and, and to a guy who was a tireless champion, a tireless champion of our hillsides and of the beauty that this community really represents. So I just would like to say thank you for this time, and I'd like to give this next minute in remembrance to our friend Ray Davis, AKA Citizen Ray. Thank you.
I think it's appropriate that Mr. Davis be remembered here in the chamber that he frequented so often. He did obviously care deeply about issues in the town of LaScatos, and he did take the time, as many of us don't, to come and make his concerns known. So we will remember and appreciate his dedication to those issues that he believed in. So we appreciate you coming this evening. Commissioners, any comments? Okay, thank you very much. My next card is from Ms. Quintana. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue in LaScatos. I think it's very appropriate that I receive this information from the mercurynews.com on the night that we're honoring Ray Davis, and I'd like to read it to you. Judge rules EIR must be performed before controversial LaScatos business park can be moved ahead. Santa Clara County Superior Judge Joseph Harbor has ruled that an environmental impact report must be completed before construction of the controversial Albright Netflix development can begin in LaScatos. The judge's 12-page ruling sided with the LaScatos citizens for responsible development, who said the EIR was needed because the business park would impact the environment. His ruling follows a court hearing that was held on March 23rd. The record here, quote, "The record here contains substantial evidence in support of a fair argument that the project may have a significant impact in a minimum of two areas, traffic and aesthetics." The project was brought to the town under the proposition that it would provide Netflix with a new and expanded headquarters. The current business park, which is across the street from the Courtside Club on Winchester Boulevard, would be razed. Buildings as much as 85 feet tall would replace them. The deal also gave developer John Shank and his partners 20 years to build out the project. The judge said, quote, "There is also a fundamental problem with the assertion that the project, which more closely resembles an array of options than a precisely defined project, will have no traffic impacts." When respondents cannot even specify to members of the public or the court what will be built on the site, is that is left to the developer to determine in the years ahead. The judge also took the town to task for not requiring that Shank put up balloons, story poles, or some kind of physical reference that would give residents an idea of what the 85-foot-tall building would look like. The judge ordered that the project approval be withdrawn and said he will continue to oversee developments.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Before I move to item two, I have a question for Ms. Bailey, which I'll state on the record. I appreciate the photograph of Mr. Davis that we're looking at, however, I can't see the lights for the speaker, the way it's placed, so I wonder if there's a place it can be put where we can see the timing lights. That would be the best possible solution.
We'll put it on his customary seat.
That would be fine. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission now regarding an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? And we're going to be discussing a proposed office project on Winchester Boulevard, and we're going to be discussing the town's capital improvement plans. So if you'd like to talk to us about something other than that, now's the time. Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to move on to item number two on our agenda. And Commissioners, you did get the desk item on that, and does anyone need any more time to review it? I don't see anyone. And this is a rather lengthy report, and if the staff has particular issues in the report that they think need to be highlighted, now is the time for the staff to do that, but we would prefer that we don't get a reading of the entire report. We'd appreciate that. And Commissioners will ask questions when you complete that.
Okay, I would like to start with a letter from Lee Quintana regarding this project that was delivered too late to present a desk item on. She's brought copies for you. And I, I will not go through the staff report, but I would like to add that a handicapped access ramp was added to the front of the building subsequent to the present, the preparation of the staff report, and what that affected was primarily the landscape plan. So there is actually one less crepe myrtle tree in the landscape plan. And I did want to correct that several of the trees on site do not meet the threshold for ordinance protection, so in fact, there are only 20 ordinance-protected trees that will be removed. Three will remain, and five are too small to qualify for protection. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Anyone have questions for Ms. Bradley regarding item number two or the staff report? Commissioner Erickson?
Thank you for your great report, Ms. Bradley. Can I get you to clarify the setback requirements for the property, particularly on the Knolls-Winchester Corner, and to clarify whether the proposed building is inside or outside of those setbacks and/or whether the story poles are placed improperly and are encroaching on the setback?
The required setback is 15 feet to the property line, and I did visit the site and did see the story poles, but I did not actually, I was not able to measure to verify that they were installed correctly. We may want to defer to the applicant for verification on how they did their survey.
Commissioner Erickson?
So the building, as proposed, is, is at all points further than 15 feet from the property line?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So the building as proposed, unrelated to where the story poles may be placed, is at least 15 feet outside of the property line on all section, all parts of Knolls and Winchester.
Correct.
Well, at the Knolls-Winchester intersection.
That is correct.
There's no portion of the building that is less than 15 feet from the property line on the Knolls stretch.
That's correct.
Other questions? Commissioner Tausford?
Yes, this is, this is regarding, it's on page five of the staff report, second paragraph, "The project's floor area ratio and lot coverage is proposed at 31 blah, blah, blah." My question is, is, and it says that it is compatible with other commercial and office projects in the neighborhood. So my question is, is it compatible with, with the immediate, what do you compare, what was that being compared to? The immediate adjacent projects? Or is it being compared with, did it take into consideration the homes?
It did not take into consideration the residences. It took into consideration other offices on Knolls and Winchester.
Okay. And then going down further under Architecture and Site Design, the last paragraph under that, that section, it's talking about some of the landscape requirements could not be included due to the street and sidewalk improvement, which were not included. Can you identify those?
I believe there was a request for some additional landscape enhancements, and those could not be done because of the requirement for street and sidewalk improvements.
Okay. And then getting to that, that easement and these, I'm under the community benefit here. Here we go, right to community benefit, but, so the building itself and the site alteration is requiring an upgrade of sidewalks, is how I'm interpreting this. Is that, is that correct? It's due to the project?
Well, there is an identified need in the general plan for enhancements to the, to Knolls at this intersection, but also the, the project is contributing to the Q, and so it is a requirement of this project. And I can defer also to Moss for more detail about those requirements.
Well, it's not that, it's just that how is that a community benefit then?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The portion along Winchester Boulevard was not a requirement, so that the applicant is offering a community benefit to widen the right turn lane onto Winchester as well. The Knolls piece is a requirement, the Winchester piece is not.
All right, thank you. Other questions for Ms. Bradley? Do any Commissioners need additional time to read the letter that we just got handed that's written by Ms. Quintana? I need a couple of minutes.
Could I just have a clarification from council? When we get letters after all deadlines are passed, is there any requirement that we read them?
Just like if a speaker comes forward tonight, this commission is, we're required to take in all communication, whether it's written or oral, tonight, no matter when it comes before the public hearing portion of the evening is closed. What weight and, that you give to it is at the commission's discretion, but we always provide that information until close of public portion of the hearing.
Does anyone but me want to, want to read this? Show me. Okay. Okay.
Sure, so I'd like some time to read it.
So let's take a couple of minutes, just fairly quickly, to read this over. And give me a high sign, if you would, when you're ready to go. For the benefit of the, who may be watching on TV and the people in the audience, what we've received is a three-page letter from Lee Quintana that is consisting essentially of questions she indicated that she asked staff, mostly regarding traffic impacts of the proposed project, tree removals, essentially dealing with traffic impacts and tree removals, I would say. And she's noting the questions that she asked, as well as the responses that she says that she received. So any commissioners that want to ask these questions of staff, I would encourage you if you're interested, or I would encourage you to ask Mr. Lean if you think that Mr. Lean can answer any of the questions, or Mr. Rohani, who's here regarding the traffic issues. So let me know by raising your hand if you're ready to go. Looks like most everybody is ready to go. So given that, I do have a card from John Lean, who is the project architect. Mr. Lean, you or anyone that is going to be addressing us as part of your presentation has up to five minutes to talk to us about the project.
Okay, thank you very much. I would say there are, from our team, I also have the landscape architect here and the civil engineer. I want to say first that this had been a remarkable project, working with town staff. They've been very helpful through the entire process. I want to thank specifically the engineering department and planning, who've helped us prepare the application that's before you this evening. We've worked closely with all staff members to address the issues as we've identified those. And without summarizing your entire report, I'll just say that, remind you that the application complies with all the general plan and zoning provisions. We bring this before you tonight without any exceptions or asking for any special consideration of the application. We have incorporated the recommendations of Larry Cannon, the town's peer review architect. We've added substantial articulation to the buildings as recommended by the commercial design guidelines and as recommended by Larry Cannon, and we've added substantial landscaping around the edges of the building, the parking lot, with a variety of ground covers and trees. And all of this to the satisfaction, we've worked closely with staff, satisfaction of the town, and I think that's evidenced by the report that's before you this evening. Additionally, I would like to say that per the goals of the general plan, this project will provide services important to the community, specifically medical services. And I would like to point out that there's a substantial interest in the, from the medical community in being tenants in this building, and I think that speaks to the fact that Los Gatos has a good reputation as a place to obtain medical services. It will provide a gateway on a major entrance to the town, as also recommended by one of the goals of the general plan, hardly the gateway that the Netflix building provides, but nevertheless, I think identifying the fact that you are entering the town of Los Gatos. And finally, I think it's an enormous benefit to the town that we can work out an arrangement where my client, this applicant, can build a building that he'll be proud of, provide services to the community, and an opportunity for the town to accomplish some long-planned major street improvements at this busy intersection of Knowles and Winchester Boulevard. That's all I have to say. I'm available to answer any questions you may have, as is my landscape architect and civil engineer.
And I'm sure there are going to be questions for you, commissioners. Are there questions for Mr. Lean? Commissioner Talisfor.
Yeah, let me just jump right in here. I looked at the building from all sides, from across the street, and I was taken with the fact that we seem to have a sort of a plethora of tower elements, not only on your building, but on the corner building across the street. And, you know, when we look for design here in Los Gatos, we try to make it unique in character with what we have. And I'm just curious, can you take me through the thought process that you had of including more tower elements to your building? And the reason that I bring it up is that I noticed that at the height it is now, you are able to still have that protection of view shed. And in your letter of justification, you talked about how this was preserving and protecting that. You, you know, had that as one of your reasons.
Yes.
So I'm really in conflict with that, and I need to have you take me through how a tower element that is actually adding height to this building, and for a purpose I don't know. I need to have you take me through your design idea.
I would say, and to answer your question, the simple answer is, we're obviously, gateway building means, in my way of thinking, a landmark building, a place, a building that helps you identify arrival at a place. And towers are traditionally the means of accomplishing that. They're more effective than having a single-story low building or a single-story very large building, but they identify, in this case, the two corners of the building as it fronts Winchester Boulevard and provide a visual connection from some distance as you travel down Winchester Boulevard. And that specifically is the reason. It's a way of saying, hey, I'm here, you know where you are when you see this building, and it's meant to identify it as an important building at an important entrance to town.
So I mean, my conflict is that I have, where there's a building across the street from it, on the Knowles, I don't even know what that shopping center is called, I'm going to call it Aldo's for sake of.
Vasiona Station.
Vasiona Station, thank you.
I think.
That also signals that as well.
Right.
So I would think that you would more or less want to complement what is already there, in lieu of the fact that you have residential behind this building and to the side of it. So I, I'm just a little, I mean, three towers, and, and, you know, we go for human scale, and I'm thinking, maybe you could, maybe the next question I have for you is, I couldn't tell from the elevations, if you were building the building on a berm, or is the grade, where is the grade of this building? Because right now, the building that's there is elevated.
Right.
So where is your building? Where does it start? Is it on?
We're actually going to lower the building pad that the existing building sits on, I think it's by six or eight inches, to bring it at a level more in between Capri Drive and the back end Winchester Boulevard. But there is about a five-foot slope from Capri downhill towards Winchester. And obviously, we want our building to be on a single flat pad. So we grade it down to the building from Capri, make the pad for the building, and we end up about three feet above Winchester Boulevard, above the sidewalk at Winchester Boulevard. So we're not building a berm, we're not building it up, we're actually lowering the existing site, and then the pad of the building stays level as it approaches Winchester Boulevard.
At three, but it's three feet higher than Winchester?
Right.
Okay, so you are building it up above the sidewalk, is my point.
It won't look very different from what's there now, but it's not a building.
Well, because of the height of it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all for now, thank you.
Just an attempt to organize a little bit, do any other commissioners have questions on that point? As if not, I actually do. I'm also concerned regarding the tower elements, and I understand your explanation about identifying the building. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your building is at the corner of Highway Nine and University, the medical building on the, I'm terrible with direction, on the north.
Well, there's a dentist in there.
Yes, that's your building, correct?
Office and residential building, yeah.
So that building has no tower element. It's arguably on a gateway to the town, and it's articulated by basically splitting up the facades, if you will, of the different buildings. So I'm just wondering, architecturally, and I'm not an architect, so I don't pretend to know, but it, people seem to default to the tower element, and it doesn't, you know, I don't think there's anything in that tower, it's just a tower. So isn't there another way to articulate a building and make it identifiable as a gateway, whatever you want to call it, without putting a tower on it? Because I share the concern, because when you drive southbound on Winchester, I think those towers do cut off the view shed.
I would say in a multi-story building, there's an opportunity for changes in, you know, part of the building one-story, part of the building two-story. In a medical use building, we've learned this from what we learned about medical uses in preparing this application, they want a fairly simple form. So we were limited, to a certain extent, how much in-and-out articulation we could do on the walls themselves. The tower seems like the right solution for a very large street like that. A smaller street, it maybe wouldn't be as appropriate, but I think there's six lanes plus a center median on Winchester. It's a, it's not a specially pedestrian-friendly environment, and we think the towers are the best way to create the identification we're looking for.
Other questions for Mr. Lean? Commissioner Erickson.
Can I just ask a follow-up question to your answer about the simple design require, are there functional reasons for that?
Yes.
Can you help us understand what those are?
Nature of the services they provide, we've been told, we want a simple, very efficient, usable space, don't give us a lot of ins and outs. So essentially, our articulation was limited to two or three or four feet offset of the wall, but not deep recesses.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you had your hand up.
I'm curious about the traffic. I was there today about quarter to three, and it was very congested. You are adding, as a community benefit, additional, essentially dedication of land on Winchester. Could you take me through how your improvements on Knowles and Winchester will affect the backup of traffic?
I can't recite the specifics from the traffic report.
No, I'm not asking you that.
But essentially, what we're doing in the case of Knowles, there's a single lane with a very short right-hand turn as you wanted to turn onto Winchester. We're going to make a right-hand turn lane that runs practically the length of our property along the Knowles Drive and provides a deeper stacking lane for cars who do want to turn right. Right now, if you want to, if you're coming out of the Aldo's Shopping Center and you want to get across the street and turn right on Winchester, oftentimes, you can't do it because of the cars that are stacked up on Knowles Drive. This is intended to relieve that. And in addition, we're providing a lane on Winchester for you to turn into as you turn right on Winchester, such that it's a dedicated right-hand turn lane, and you can merge with that traffic, the result being that you won't be sitting in that right-hand turn lane on Knowles as long as you would without this extra lane on Winchester Boulevard.
Let me follow up with something.
Can I just ask him, ask one thing Commissioner Talisfor has asked, and it may be helpful for all of us? Can you put your plan up on the Elmo so that we can maybe see what you're talking about? Or at least refer to us where we can look in our packet on the plans you've submitted so that we can see?
Let me, I'll take a stab at it.
Okay, thank you. And then Commissioner O'Donnell, yes, you can follow up.
Yes, well, I'll let him get to that.
And if it's easier, oh, there you go. Thank you. And would you tell us what page that is so we can also look at it in our packet?
E3.
Thank you.
Okay, so can I, I'll follow up now. I did, Mr. Lean?
Yes.
When you're ready, I'll ask you a question. I did exactly what you were talking about. I was coming out of the Vasiona Shopping Center, having been in the Purple Onion, so I would take the same exit as you referred to as Aldo's, so either way. And it was very, very difficult, as you said, to be able to turn right onto Winchester. Now, the question I have, which I just don't recall, is, I think it's a good idea to extend that stacking lane, but if you come out of the driveway, as you must, where will the end of the stacking lane be insofar as the driveway across the street is concerned? How will it help if that driveway is mid-stacking lane?
I think the answer to your question is, and I may rely here on our civil engineer to help me with the answer, I think the answer to your question is that the cars that are blocking you from entering Knowles Drive on your way to turn right on Winchester won't be stacked up as long, that the level of service of the intersection will in fact improve.
But once it prevented me, it was really a challenging thing I did, wasn't just the people going right, in fact, they were okay. You had to get across one or two lanes of traffic that were going straight and perhaps going left on Winchester, and by the time you thought you could get out there, then people were going right off of Winchester onto Knowles. One of them was very courteous and didn't run over me. So if the exit from what I'll call Aldo's were far enough back, and it may be, I don't remember, then the length of that stacking lane may help. But if it doesn't, the problem doesn't seem to be the stacking lane insofar as people leaving Vasiona Station. It's another problem.
I think I know how to answer your question, and the way to answer your question is to ask Kevin Rohani, because the engineering department determined what improvements needed and could be made to address the kind of issues we're discussing.
Okay, we're asking questions apparently now of you.
Yes, let's defer that until everybody's asked their questions of Mr. Lean. So does anyone have any other questions of Mr. Lean? Commissioner Smith.
I want to ask you about both the traffic and the towers, and then Mr. Rohani can think about this. I'm very familiar with the intersection and the next intersection, which is Capri Drive, because there's a courthouse there that, that used to be functioning and is no longer. What I wonder is, the peak hours during the day, are they driven by, do you know, are they driven by the medical shift hours at the hotel, at the hospital? I was just thinking about the three o'clock in the afternoon, it's not that it would be a school getting out, I'm wondering if it is just general medical hours between three and four o'clock. Do you know that?
I do not know that.
That was just one of my questions. And secondly, my question about the towers, and I went back to take a look again, obviously, you know now, we have a, we have similar thinking about towers in terms of, I can't say I'm not in favor of it, but I can say that I find it very imposing there. And I noticed that there are split windows on some sides and not split on others, and there's some blackouts, which I can't tell, above the entrance, is that going to be windows or not, the entrance looking out at Winchester? I did attempt to stand in the back here with what you have up on the. I did attempt to stand in the back here with what you have up on the wall and take a closer look at it.
Okay, I, let me see if I remember everything you asked me, are you looking at sheet four of my drawing?
Um, I'm actually looking, I started to look at sheet, just one where it says Winchester Boulevard West and if we take a look at those towers, they have split windows up at the top tower.
Let's turn to sheet four. It's essentially the same drawings without all of the other existing buildings drawn around it.
And Mr. Lean, is it possible for you to put that up on the screen so that others can see?
Sure, yes, that's a great idea.
Thank you.
This, the top elevation is the west elevation, this elevation faces Capri, Capri Drive and the center, the, the middle of the three towers has the dark squares above the awning, those are not windows, those are just openings in a wall, daylighting the recessed entrance that occurs behind that wall. So those aren't windows, those are just openings without any glass in them. And then if you look, I think you're talking, in the elevation directly below, tower on the right has high windows in that.
Correct.
Those are actual windows, we're not going to make them blacked out or put fluorescent lights behind them or anything like that. And then the next elevation below that, the tower on the far left is at the corner and probably the most important tower of all the towers. This is the corner of Winchester at the main driveway into the, onto the property and those are again high, unblacked out windows above the lower windows. Is that everything you asked me?
Uh, yes, so what you're saying, on the top one, on the Knowles Drive side, it's just going to be openings in the masonry or?
Yeah, essentially we have a, an atrium there, open to the, to air, open to the outdoors, it's not an interior space, but it's, uh, it's a rain-covered area as you step into that space to open the door to go in the building and it's a high, open space with those three openings in the proportion of that space.
So all weather elements can go in that window, light?
Yeah.
Rain? Birds?
Yep.
Okay, uh, and then the second part of it is, we can talk to Mr. Rohani about the traffic at a different part of this hearing.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Lean, Commissioner Talisfor.
Right, I'm going to move a little bit different with, but with another roof element and that's the parapet? That's be, that's between the, let's see, if we go back to four, I guess.
Yes.
It's the parapet that is screening evidently the mechanicals on top of the?
Yes.
Okay, so what I wanted to know is, what is the, the purpose of making it that tall for that length of ti- I mean, for that length?
Turn to the page, I think it's page three, just below, before that.
Turn to where?
Sheet three, just before sheet four. On the left-hand side of the sheet is, here it is, the roof plan.
Okay.
You see this rectangle in the middle of the roof, that's the screen around the equipment, in other words, it's not near the edge, edges of the building footprint.
Oh, okay.
It's very much in the middle of the roof. Typically, four feet tall will cover any piece of equipment up there and I believe we have a four-foot tall, yes, it says right there, four-foot tall equipment screen.
Okay, so then what is the purpose of the additional, I guess, half-wall, part-wall between the towers, I mean, is there a functional purpose for that?
That was actually a recommendation of Larry Cannon, to bring the wall up to a certain height, stop it and push back and then another section up, it was a, it was a means of adding articulation to the building.
So does that part, okay, then maybe that's the answer I'm looking for, what you're telling me is, that's not a, a straight wall that goes between the tower elements on Winchester, but it actually steps back?
That's right.
Okay, how far does that step back?
I think it's five feet.
Okay, and I would imagine he suggested that, do you know why he suggested that?
Well, once again, it's to give some relief instead of just a continuous wall plane up to the height.
Right.
We go up so far, go back and then go up again.
Thank you, I couldn't tell from this elevation.
Other questions for Mr. Lean? Okay, I actually have a question and Mr. Lean, if you could keep up the page you have?
This one?
That goes to my question. So in our staff report, one of the things that we're told is that if the planning commission were to approve this building as proposed as a medical office building, you have enough parking. If someday, the doctors don't want to be there anymore, we would not have enough parking to make it into a different kind of use for an office unless we had two more spaces. So I'm wondering, why can't we get two more spaces?
Boy, we'd love to have two more spaces and we just can't find a spot to put them.
What if you make your building smaller?
Uh, I'm, what's that?
What if you make your building smaller?
Um, that's pretty much what it would take to do it, but I'm not even sure that would work, if you look at this, you see we've got a continuous driving lane that cars, the parking cars back into, I, I could make the building smaller, but I couldn't change the function of the parking lot such that I could add any spaces. In other words, I located the drive aisle on the parking lot on the edges of the property as a means, not only to separate it from the residential area behind, but to get that little driveway length as long as I can make it, because the longer I can make it, the more spaces I can create backing onto that. So moving this building one way or another is not going to lengthen that driving aisle. I'm, I'm just pointing out to you, moving the building or making it smaller would not result in any additional parking space. I haven't heard this discussion before about maybe we wouldn't have enough.
Well, I'll retell you, it's on page six of our staff report and I'm looking at the two paragraphs that are just above what's designated as letter G traffic and the last paragraph says, "The proposal is for medical offices only, based on the number of parking spaces provided, the building as a whole could not be converted to a general office or retail use. Two additional parking spaces would be required to accommodate those uses." So my obvious question is, why would we want to limit ourselves to a purely medical use when we're potentially constructing such a large building? It seems like, and again, I'm not an architect, why can't we fit two other offices in there, two other offices, two other parking spaces to give the town the flexibility in, just in case on the off-chance that that is someday not a medical building?
And I'm, and maybe the answer to your question is, maybe it can't all be offices, maybe a portion of it ends up being retail. I mean, it's a limitation that, you know, can't be changed in the event that, I sincerely believe this will be medical for its entire useful life, but in the event that somebody wanted to make it all office, clearly we wouldn't be able to do that and we'd have to find some use for a portion of the building that would keep us in compliance with the parking requirement.
Other questions for Mr. Lean, Commissioner Erickson.
So you, you've chosen to preserve the three entrances to the property as opposed to reducing it to two, is there some particular reason that one, because if one were to reduce one of those entrances, one could also increase the parking capacity?
You know, that's a, that's a very good question and I don't remember the history of, of staff said, you know, it functions better with the, with the third driveway, but certainly if we eliminated the driveway on Capri Drive, we'd have two more parking spots. I'd be happy to do that if, unless somebody tells me it can't be done.
Okay, well, we'll defer that one for staff as well, but right now, anybody have any more questions for Mr. Lean, his landscape architect or his civil engineer? Commissioner Smith.
We talk about the entrances, I just want to make sure that, we're talking about an entrance on Winchester itself, correct?
Yes.
And, um, is that planned to be both ingress and egress?
Yes.
So we already have people turning right, we're going to help them turn right off of Knowles and then how are they, they're going to be exiting that very lane that we're going to be pushing the traffic or helping the traffic move from Knowles to Winchester, but the people leaving the building, what I'm wondering is, do you have to have an entrance on the Winchester side?
For functionality, yes, and I would point out to you that unlike the people who are stacking up on Knowles making to make, waiting to make a right-hand turn, people in the parking lot, it's a different situation, they don't have cars stacked up behind them, might have another employee or two, but it's not the same as the kind of traffic generated on a public street. So in terms of it interrupting the improvements we're placing on Winchester, I don't think there's an issue there.
So you don't think people will turn down Capri and shoot through the parking lot in order not to wait for the light?
Oh, I can't say they won't do that.
Right.
No.
But you could pick up your parking space if you didn't have a Winchester entrance, correct?
Uh, no, I think it would be the entrance on Capri Drive that we're considering removing.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just saying, it's a possibility we could take that one out.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lean, Commissioner Talisfor?
Okay, um, I have a lot of questions, but let me, let me ask you this, let's start from the inside, what is, what is the height inside, interior to the ceiling, from the floor to the ceiling, what, what is that height? Because this is a 32-foot building, correct? Is that the height from the outside, is that what I'm, that's what I saw in the staff report, is that?
To the towers?
Yeah, to the towers, it's 32 feet.
The height inside from the floor to the underside of the roof is 18 feet.
18 feet, and this is a one-story building?
And this dimension was prescribed to us by who we believe is are going to be our major tenant, medical use, so we got to have 18 feet. I know.
You tell me why.
Because of all the utilities that the medical use requires above a ceiling. It's, it's major, it's, it's piping, it's ducting, all things that I hadn't been aware of until I did this project, but they need 18 feet.
I see, okay, well, I didn't know that, so that's good to know. And I guess the other thing that bothers me is this whole landscape, if you, if, on, oh, exhibit five, Larry Cannon, or seven, Larry Cannon's, um, letter, and I'm sorry, I don't know what page it is, oh, page three. The bottom photograph shows landscaped frontages comparison. So if we go across the street to the Visona Station, I see a lot of green and then when I look at this new proposal, I see, I, it's, it's not similar at all.
No, it's not similar, it's not intended to be similar.
It's not intended to be similar?
I believe, uh, I'm going to get my landscape architect up here, but I think Visona Station is lawn, isn't it, and grass, it's?
And, and trees and shrubs.
Yeah, this is very much more luxurious than, than Visona Station.
Okay, how, how is that?
Chris, you want to talk on this one? This is Chris Kinkel of Kukuchi Associates, our landscape architect.
I understand your question. When I first read the report from Larry Cannon, I was a little taken aback by it and the, he's looking at this in two dimensions and he's showing it in two dimensions and what you're seeing is a, is a plan with some convenient color placed on it, but in reality, what's in front of Aldo's is lawn and a few trees. So when you look at the building, you see the mass of that building and there's really nothing in front of it to set up the foundation of it, it's just a green carpet. And lawn is great, but it doesn't do a lot, it just looks nice, it needs to be mowed. And what we've proposed in a smaller, more compact area is a lot more vertical elements to the planting, we have more variety, we have more texture, we have more color and we're layering it in there so that when you look at the building, you're going to have a lot more impact by planting than you would with a simple lawn or a simple, uniform, flat planting material. So that's what our approach is, we're getting a lot more out of the vertical element than we are out of the horizontal element, which you see in the plan. So that's the approach that we took, so.
And what's the size of the trees you have?
Uh, we've got the, along Winchester, we've got the sycamores, which is the standard tree that's along there anyway, I'm sure you're all pretty familiar with how big they are.
Mr. Kinkel, if you'd like to point us to things on the document, you can pick up the microphone and take it over there with you so you're not going back and forth.
So, uh, these trees here are... Those trees are the fraxinus, which are ashes and then underneath them are some smaller trees, so we have different layers of trees, we have an over story and we have an under story, because that was one of the suggestions, was that it was too uniform through there, so we articulated the trees as well to get varying heights. So the lower trees will help hide the, the parapet and the top of the, the building and the taller trees will stand proud and, and just give a, more of a streetscape and complement the, the mass and the weight of the trees over on the Visona Station side.
Okay. Okay, other questions for Mr. Lean or his landscape architect or civil engineer? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Now is the time, I don't have any cards, for anybody in the audience who, sir, come on up and hand your card to our secretary, tell us who you are and you have three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is David Matsuo and I am resident in Los Cuidos, I live at 17240 Clearview Drive. I also own the adjacent property 14274 Capri Drive and I also own a business in the Visona Station Shopping Center, so I'm very familiar with that corner. I have two questions regarding the, the plan for them. The first element is that I noticed that a trash bin has been placed adjacent to my property at the corner, roughly at the corner between my property line and Capri. So my concern as the owner of that adjacent property is that it's going to depreciate the value of my property due to the fact that we're not only talking about trash, but we're talking about medical waste going there as well. Kind of curious what kind of, um, organization is running that, you know, there's different types of medical waste, whether it's just a common office type of materials or if it's coming from a surgical center or if it's coming from a radiological type of operation. So I'm very interested to find out if there are any alternative sites that that might be able to be placed on that property. The other element is the drainage of water from the property, as it was brought up earlier, there is a significant grade to that property and that the documents show that the drainage is towards my property line and I, I see that there has been, that has been addressed on the plans, but the question I have is how robust is that system going to be? If it fails and that can be due to not, perhaps not the design, but perhaps the upkeep, if someone throws trash and, and that's not cleared out on a timely basis and we have a heavy rain, I'd hate to see my property get flooded with runoff water. Other than that, I think it's a beautiful project, I think that the medical community, medical community would appreciate having more options for them and I applaud Atta and his attempts in trying to bring his project forward, thank you.
Thank you, sir, let's see if there's any questions, any questions for Mr. Matsuo? Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to talk to us about this proposed project? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to invite, if you'd care to, Mr. Lean and/or his landscape architect to come back up, you have three minutes and I would strongly encourage you to address Mr. Matsuo's questions.
And I will address that and, and leave the rest up to you. Mr. Matsuo is a very reasonable man and we have every intention of addressing his issues and here's what comes to mind at this point in time, first of all, I don't believe medical waste is allowed to go in a public dumpster, that there are very specific requirements for dealing with medical waste, including incineration of medical waste and if that's not already a requirement, perhaps you can add it as a condition that they shall be treated, medical waste shall not go into the public dumpster. The other thing that comes to mind is I think we could rearrange this dumpster to push it away from the property line and add some vine screening or other landscape screening to visually dampen the effect of its presence there on the property line, move it away and add landscaping, we'd be happy to do that.
Are you, okay, any questions, if, Mr. O'Donnell?
I think there was the third issue and he was concerned about the drainage, would you like to respond?
Drainage is absolutely not an issue and you can talk to our civil engineer about that, but I had this discussion with him today, we have a, what's called a swale, a low drainage area, continuous along our property line as required by, I think SEQA requires this, SEQA doesn't want you to dump your parking lot water or your rainwater in the street if it can possibly be helped, it's all meant to be dissipated on the property and extensive provisions are... It's all meant to be dissipated on the property, and extensive provisions are part of the civil engineering plans to see that the water goes into the swale, in this case, and slows down and settles into the ground, and we can virtually guarantee that water will not flow onto our neighboring property. It's against the law, basically.
Any other questions for Mr. Lean? Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Commissioner Smith?
It's just a quick question. Between the building and the fruit stand, there's, there's some kind of a fence, or is it a wall? I'm sorry, I was looking closely here.
There's not, it's not part of this proposal to build either a fence or a wall, I don't think, is there? No.
So it's just going to be a open parking lot, and then?
Landscaping.
With landscaping?
Yeah.
And then we start the fruit stand?
Yeah. We would be required to build a six-foot wall if we were adjacent to residential property. And in fact, many designers, professionals regard solid walls as being sort of detrimental to the overall character of a neighborhood. They make it look like a wall community. We don't have a wall or a fence in this case.
All right, thank you.
I'm actually gonna refer the commissioner, and Mr. Lean, I have a question for you on our staff item. If everyone would just look at the last paragraph, it's, the correction is that next to you is a single-family residence, not a retail fruit stand. So, given that that is the case, that, at least that's what our staff report is saying, does that change the requirement? Because that, that's what we've got here.
Right, the, a wall is not required because the property to the south is zoned commercial. Even though it does have a single-family home, the code does not require a wall.
Commissioner, say again.
Has staff heard of any comments from the owners of the residential part? Home to the south?
I have not.
Okay. And then if I may ask the applicant if he has had any, have you had any conversations with the homeowner?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Lean? This time, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I don't think there's anyone else in the public to address this, so I'm gonna close the public portion of the hearing, and I'm gonna take the prerogative, because I think there's a lot of questions regarding traffic. So, Mr. Rohani, I'm gonna ask you to come to the podium and be available to answer questions. And I know, Commissioner O'Donnell, that you had deferred a question, so...
Mr. Rohani, you heard the conversation. I just need some help in understanding how the improvements being suggested, which sound like good improvements, relate, for example, to exiting Visona Station. My experience was only basically today, and it was very difficult to leave Visona to try to get to the extreme right lane so I could turn right on Winchester. I had to cross at least one lane of traffic going towards the hospital, and then there were, I think, one or two lanes of traffic coming away from the hospital, and then there was the right turn lane. The extension of the right turn lane will help the queuing, but I have some trouble visualizing where the exit is from Visona Station in relationship to the extended queuing line. Because if it's, if, if the extension goes beyond the exit, it's not gonna help. And secondly, what I had a problem with was not the people turning, turning right, but the people going in the straight direction in both ways. So how are we addressing that problem?
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell, as you had mentioned, you've been out there today and saw the site. Right now, in that area between Winchester and Capri on Knolls, we have two lanes in either direction, two towards, going towards the hospital away from Winchester, and two going toward Winchester eastbound from Knolls. Basically, what, the major problem that we have encountered over the past many months and years is on the eastbound lanes, coming away from Knolls, away from the hospital, going toward Winchester, either northbound or southbound. Right now, we only have one lane that is a shared left and true lane going eastbound, and the right lane, which is adjacent to this property and goes southbound on Winchester. Now, what's proposed as a part of the, the project with the easements that they have agreed to provide the town is additional, to make that one additional lane on Knolls. And that's the, the lane right adjacent to their property, where they're moving the lane forward. So basically, in the segment on Knolls, from Winchester to Capri, we're gonna have five lanes. The lanes on the, let's say Aldo's side, will remain the same, the two lanes going toward the hospital. Maz will help us on that. And then... Sure.
I think I, what I don't understand is whether making a exit movement from Visona Station and trying to take a right turn at the, on Knolls on Winchester is all benefited by this, and it's not. Whether one ought to be prevented to make a left turn coming out of Visona?
Visona Station. I, I don't see how, what is being proposed will help the problem at all exiting Visona Station. And that's a really, you know, it was a very dangerous thing. If I ever do it again, I'm not gonna go left there. But we, there's no sign preventing a left turn lane there. And we've been told that this, making the stacking lane longer will help, and I don't doubt that, but it's not gonna address this one problem. So I guess I'm saying, what's your perception of that problem, and what remedy, if at all, do we have for that?
Currently, as you mentioned, most people who are in the Visona Station Shopping Center, whether at the Chinese restaurant or Aldo's, or in that general proximity, if they go in from Knolls, most they come out on the first driveway towards Winchester, on the other side of Aldo's, and they come make a right turn onto Winchester. You're correct, it's difficult to come out of the Visona Station, one or come into Winchester. You have to cross several lanes of traffic, and certain times of the day, that become problematic because of the stacking. What this project will do, will help facilitate the flow of the traffic, because right now, we only have two lanes. With the additional one lane, and also with both our signals, the one at Winchester-Knolls and at Knolls-Capri, they're gonna be synchronized. So that would facilitate the flow of traffic to move it quicker. Now, again, to, coming back to answer your question, whether that, that would, this project would help folks from the Visona Station wanting to make a left turn coming out Winchester? That's hard to say, probably not. That may be a wash in the, after you evaluate. Certain time of the day, certainly with the traffic going and coming, there will be a longer lead time to have to wait at the driveway at Visona Station, wanted to come out and make a left turn. So, and right now, there, yeah, there is no sign at the, at the entrance of the driveway that, no, you cannot make a left turn. And I've seen people from different times of the day, sometimes, sometimes you can easily make the movement, sometimes you have to wait for the traffic to, to clear out. That's why on Visona Station, they have like three different driveways coming out on Winchester. Most people use those to come out on Winchester.
What is our ability, I mean, I realize that Visona Station is not before us this evening. But your, your solution to the problem is most people go out another way. There's no requirement that most people go out another way, and I'm not most people, but I didn't go out another way. So I just, I'm wondering whether you've looked at that situation. Certainly more traffic will be generated by making this building bigger. So we will be aggravating, it seems to me, a very bad exiting situation. And I don't know whether we have any, we being the town?
Sure.
Have any right to put a no left turn sign at Visona Station exiting there? But it ought to be considered if you do, I don't know.
Correct, and obviously that's a private shopping center from that perspective. Let's say hypothetically, even if signs is put out there. A lot of the situation like this because of enforcement issue, where, let's say, many people will abide by the rules, and if there is such a sign, they will not make a left turn, and some, depending on time of day and night, they might. So enforcement of it is gonna be difficult. That's why generally, we try not to put restrictions or impose certain things that's not enforceable by, you need to have somebody, police out there, or some enforcement body, so to speak, that regulates that.
Well, I'll, I'll end it, but I would suggest to you that had I seen a sign saying no left turn, I wouldn't have turned left. Now, I don't think I'm in a unique minority there. So whether 75% of the population abates signs and 25% doesn't, that would be 75%, it wouldn't have that problem. So the fact that you don't have the enforcement ability, I'm not sure is a, is a reason not to do something which might...
Sure.
Somebody, I had never, I don't recall coming out that way before, and I naively thought I could go left. A sign would have really helped if it said, "Don't go left."
That, that's certainly something we can look into. I mean, we have to have a discussion with the owner of the shopping center. Again, let's say you or others are the customers, so I'm sure they wanna have their customers convenient, easily accessed, so...
I'm not pursuing, I, I was just curious whether the town has any jurisdiction, since we, I control the road there?
Sure.
To prevent ingress and egress onto a public road? Not, do we have a right to go onto Visona Station and tell them what to do? Not my, not my point. So, but anyway, enough, thank you.
Thank you. Other traffic questions for Mr. Rohani? Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Rohani, because of many times I've asked you this question, the traffic synchronization, I'm concerned about that corner anyway, because I, I've seen the impact on the, the Knolls-Winchester, frankly, the whole Winchester corridor there. And I have been many times on Knolls from the direction of the hospital, waiting and waiting and waiting at that Capri light, because the traffic is so heavy there. So when you say it's synchronized, I'm wondering, is that, I, I don't get the sense that it's synchronized. So are you going to synchronize it?
Yes, we are. I think the conversation you alluded to months ago, when we were talking about some other projects along Winchester, and we talked about synchronization of the signal. Basically, once these two intersections are synchronized, for instance, when you make a left turn, you're coming from town, going northbound, or you wanna go to the hospital, you make a left turn into Knolls, once you get the green, making the left, you're gonna get a green crossing Capri. So there will not be, you will not make a turn and go to Capri and have to wait, and then stack up all the way towards Winchester, so...
So you've got my idea. Also, however, coming out of Dell, so across Knolls, it's Dell Avenue. Then when you wanna turn left onto Winchester, I don't believe that there is a left lead arrow. And so, so people who are gonna go straight, and people who are turning left, do you think there is one?
I believe so.
Okay, there is one? Okay, you know there is one? Okay, good.
Because that's also, on the other side, right at the bottom, bottom right, that's A Street. And that's, this is kind of a unique intersection. We got railroad crossing, we got the side street, A, and this is all signalizing, yeah, but yet that, there is a left turn movement.
All right, and then just, my last question is, the boundary for Los Gatos, there's something about Visona Station, and I, I just wanna say, when you're talking about people egress in different ways, they also go to the side street where the Chevron Station is and Visona Station, but there is no traffic light there. So crossing left to go down toward 17, let's say, on Winchester, is also, you know, we're asking people to go across six lanes, basically.
Correct.
Without a traffic light.
Without a tra, correct. And what's happening on Winchester, just past the, as you move, kind of, again, from the upper right, going further north, we have a median island that provides the left turns going into Dell. After that, we have a, the median is basically striped, so it's a, call it, sometime call it a refuge or the left-hand pocket, that people from the Visona Station who wanna go make a left going north on Winchester towards Santo Mass and 17, they pull into that median, and once the traffic clears on the rest of northbound Winchester, they make that. That, we have not encountered a major problem or problem of sorts that's been a concern.
So there would not be another traffic light there, all of which impacts this building, and we're doubling the size of the building, so I'm just thinking about all of that.
And when we did the traffic study for this project, since we're on the subject, if I may, this, this intersection, the Winchester-Knolls, currently operates at a level of D, which is acceptable based on town code and standards. What, with improvements that we're doing, it will help, it will reduce the, the level of service by almost 25%. Makes it almost a C, still in the D range, but it's kind of a right between a C and a, and a D. So it would, again, having that third lane will definitely facilitate the flow of traffic at this intersection. Also, I think a point, if I may mention, right at the corner of the building, when you make a right turn from Knolls into Winchester, we got those two arrows you see kind of pointing toward Winchester. This is that lane that you see at some intersections that, if you're in that lane and you don't see a traffic coming and, southbound on Winchester, it acts like a free right lane. So that really operates, even though it is a signal, but many times it will operate like a free right. So that would really help facilitate the flow of traffic. So even though in theory, it's just one lane gets added to it, this intersection, and the corridor, if I may, from Capri to Winchester, is gonna operate much better. The, the stacking and some of the queuing problem will, will go away.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rohani, let me see if there's any other questions, and we appreciate you explaining things to us thoroughly, but if you can also be precise in answering the questions, that would be appreciated as well. Other questions of Mr. Rohani? Commissioner Talasfora?
Can you just review with us again? And I can't see all of it, but this is a great photograph. The driveways out from the property? Can you, or, show us?
It may be that Mr. Rohani's not familiar with the
Oh, maybe.
Building design, so you're gonna have to look at your plans, I think. Is that correct, Mr. Rohani?
No, I'm, I'm
Okay.
Familiar with this. You're referring to this driveway coming out of the site? Okay. Right, there is one driveway here, there is one driveway on Capri, and there is a driveway on Winchester.
So, the question I have, and I had a similar experience leaving that property today, and, and it was that I didn't wanna turn right. I didn't wanna be in the right-hand turn lane, right? I wanted to be in the other one, because I wanted to go straight across. But for me, I had a hard time getting across that right lane. And it was only because of a blessed soul that stopped her car and let me go across two lanes of traffic, is my point. So my question is, how will extending that right lane help that situation?
Just so that I can understand your question clearly. You were at a driveway on Knolls, close to the Capri intersection, and you wanted to make a right turn out of that? Is that...
I was right, I was in the right turn.
Okay.
And I was, I needed to get out on the left.
Correct.
Cross the right-hand turn lane, because I needed to go to the left-hand.
And go northbound on Winchester, okay?
And I, it was only because somebody stopped for me and held back a whole line of cars that I was able to do. So I guess what I'm saying is, I always question the driveway.
I mean, that driveway certainly, you know, serves as a function for ingress and egress to the site. But to your question, whether having this additional right, right lane will help or, or hinder coming out of that driveway, that's pretty much a function of the time of day and the flow of the traffic, and that's a difficult quantitative, what's, what's the direct impact of it? A lot of times, depending on when you are, and like you said, you know, somebody stopped, and, again, this is not uncommon through many intersections, many driveways around, whether it's in Los Gatos or other parts, this is just the nature...
It's just, it's the, the situation with the, the larger building and the, you know, and the intensity of the use will end up creating, you know, more traffic and situations.
Other questions for Mr. Rohani? Mr. O'Donnell?
Earlier on, there was a question of three exits versus two exits. And I think Mr. Lean deferred to you, if I recall correctly. Once, you know, I don't think it's our business to tell these people that maybe in the future they're gonna want two more parking spots. That's, far as I'm concerned, up to them. But I think Commissioner Talasfora's point is well-taken. If the exit directly onto Knolls simply puts people at risk... If the exit directly onto Knowles simply puts people at risk, there may be a reason we don't want an exit going onto Knowles, in which case you might get two parking spaces, I don't know. But I guess, you know, if you want to go left from that exit, it's really hazardous. If you want to go right, but you want to get in the, a lane that you can go straight across, or you can go left, that's also hazardous. So that exit onto Knowles is good if you happen to want to go right on Winchester. On the other hand, if you simply exited onto Winchester, it would be better. So I guess the question is, why do they need three exits?
That's a question that certainly, maybe the applicant can address as part of their site circulation, but I...
They put it to you.
No, I understand, but the, the functionality of the site, certainly making the left turn from that driveway on, on Knowles to, to make, crossing the lanes, unless they're going on northbound Winchester, it can be problematic during certain time of day, no doubt about it. Ideally, that intersection, that driveway could be a right-in, right-out. So you could just come in from eastbound on Knowles, make a right out, go directly to, on this lane, and go on Winchester, come back towards Highway eighty-five. That's, then you wouldn't have to cross any of the lanes, the left lanes. That's a, you know, somewhat, and we have that in certain locations, a right-in, right-out. That's something that certainly we would entertain in our discussion, we could recommend to the applicant. It would make a better sense than a, than a situation where they would have full left and rights. But that's, that would be something that we could recommend, as far as functionality on Knowles.
Well, are, we have conditions tonight suggested, and I guess I'm wondering, since you're, I have great respect for you, and you're a good traffic engineer, what is your position? Is that something we ought to be conditioning, or, or not?
That, that's certainly from our, our perspective, or my perspective, our staff, that would be a good recommendation to have, to have that driveway a right-in, right-out. That would eliminate a lot of the theoretical conflicts that may be with the left turn movements coming out of the driveway and wanting to go northbound on Winchester and having to cross lanes of traffic, which could be in certainly AM and PM peak times.
Any other questions for Mr. Rohani? Thank you, sir. Any questions directed to staff generally, before we ask for any motions? I don't see any, but I actually have one. Which is, it's several points in our traffic report, and I think staff can answer this as opposed to Mr. Rohani, which is why I'm directing it to you. There is referred to a proposed, let's see, I'm going to, it's on page one, I guess, of the traffic study, that's one, two, three, four. Fourth paragraph says, "According to town staff, a proposed project in the town's general plan would add an eastbound lane on Knowles Drive at the southwest corner of Winchester." I know that that's in the capital improvements plan that we're looking at tonight, and I wonder, what is, what is that? Is it tied to, what's the proposed plan? Is it tied to Albright? I'll defer that question to Maz.
Good evening. Maz Zerbo, Assistant Engineer. That development is actually a CIP, that project's a capital improvement project. It's not directly correlated with any other project. It's strictly a level of service improvement.
So that's an independent town project funded by community benefit or traffic funds?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay. I am going to look to my fellow commissioners for a motion, and then if there's any questions or discussion regarding the motion, we'll take that after the motion. Do I have a motion? Don't everybody step up at once? Commissioner O'Donnell?
My question really is, I heard so much discussion of the design of the building, that unless somebody wants to make a motion, I, I'm confused by that, because I, I understand, I think, the rest of it. But when people say, "I don't like towers" and things like that, I have trouble coming to grips with that. So what, what I'm wondering is, if you're inviting a motion, while, I'm at least confused as to where my fellow commissioners are coming on design, but that, if you are, you are. Fine, go ahead. That's maybe why you're...
I am definitely inviting a motion, and I invite you to vote no. If you disagree with the motion, that's hopefully going to be articulated.
No, I'm suggesting, the reason you weren't getting a motion was because of this problem, but you can take all the time you'd like. Go right ahead.
Well, I'll make a motion then, and people can disagree if they like. But I, I think that, my position is that we do things more efficiently and better. If we have a motion, I suspect my motion will not succeed, but I will make one, and then people can make a different one. My motion is actually to continue this project for a redesign, and I continue it to date certain, and I would want to continue it specifically for a redesign for the following reasons. Number one, the tower elements, I think they're, we have expressed a concern with, they're too high. I do think that they block the viewshed on south, if you're traveling southbound at the hillside. And I think that Mr. Lean is a creative enough architect that he can come up with another way to delineate and articulate and identify his building, except for a tower. I really do. And I have faith that he can do that. My other concern for the redesign is that we should see a different site circulation plan, given that we spent a half hour or so discussing the circulation for the project, and how one can enter or exit from that parking lot safely. That we should consider, and have the architect and his civil engineer consider reducing the number of exits, signing the exits, or in some other way, improving the circulation, because we've heard two or three commissioners say that they had problems with the circulation out of that parking lot. I also think that by reconsidering the site design, that if the town of Los Gatos, and I do think it's our business to say so, can get two parking spaces in that parking lot, and thus increase the flexibility of a thirteen thousand square foot plus building that we would be approving on that space, we should do that. I would like to see maybe landscaping better represented or articulated. I'm concerned that twenty-six trees are being taken out, and the only reason I can see that they're being taken out is that it interferes with construction. That troubles me. So my motion would be to continue this matter to a date certain for at least those items to be considered, and if there's any second, I'm happy to, to consider other factors that should be considered in any redesign. Commissioner Smith?
I will second that motion, and believe that you have covered the issues that I had myself, so I would second the motion.
Commissioner Taussfor?
And I would have seconded that motion. You know, I think, for some reason, somebody started landmark buildings and is describing them with tower elements as a landmark building. And, and yes, that is one, but it is not always a landmark building. I can cite several buildings in our town. The high school, the church across the street from it, the building at university at Highway Nine, that's a landmark building. It doesn't have a tower at all, and it's absolutely beautifully done, and I know Mr. Lean is very familiar with it. I believe, and I really, I, I do not want to see Winchester as a, as a wall with two turrets at the end of it. And I also, there's a much more, whether you agree with the building that is across the street at Visona Station or not, that is the building that you have to be, that you have to compliment and be sympathetic with. I guess a tower like this, or three of them, would make a bigger statement, but is that what we're trying to do here? Or are we trying to really design a building that really fits in to the scale and the, the scale of what, of the other buildings that are adjacent to it, and also that human scale that I talked about? I don't know how you do that, if you have to lower the building grade or not, I don't, I don't know about that. But anyway, so I think that's what I would like to say, and why I'm supporting this motion.
Any other comments or discussion regarding the motion? Commissioner Seack?
I'll be supporting the motion, and we don't need to make it as part of it, but just a reminder that, since it is coming back for a redesign, that one of the speakers, the neighbor, I believe, who owns the business south of it, had asked for some better screening of the trash enclosure, and so just wanted a reminder of the applicant to, to show that in the plans that are being sent back to us.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call the question. The motion's been made to continue this matter for a date certain for specific items of redesign. Motion's been made by the chair and seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Commissioner Bourgeois is opposed, so the motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry, you're abstaining. Okay. So, the motion passes five to one, to one. Commissioner Bourgeois opposed, Commissioner O'Donnell abstaining. And we need to ask Mr. Lean to come back up and reopen the hearing to tell us when he can come back before us.
Just a point of...
May twenty-three would be good for us.
Let me just hold that for a second, Ms. Propp.
Just a point of order, under the Planning Commission policies and procedures, ten point one, the reason for an abstention should be given by the commissioner at the time of the abstention.
The reason for the abstention is, I don't understand the scope of our ability on the motion. We're re, as near as I can tell, we're redesigning, and I think the council told us we weren't supposed to do that. So I'm putting it down that I don't feel fully advised enough to either support or oppose the motion. I am more confused by it. That's the reason for the abstention.
Okay. Commissioner Lean is, Commissioner Lean, I've, I've, I've given you a job you probably don't want.
Been there, done that.
I know you have. Is suggesting May twenty-third, is there, is, does that fit with our current agendas?
Yes, that was the one we discussed.
Okay. Is there any motion from a commission member to continue this matter to May twenty-third? If not, I'll do it. I moved, we continue this matter to our meeting of May twenty-third. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Smith's second, saw in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, passes unanimously. So now we'll move to item number three, which is the commercial, I mean, commercial, what is it? Capital Improvements Plan. And what I would suggest, and I would invite staff to tell us anything different, is that if you have a specific question or concern about one of the items, that we could raise it, I don't know if staff wants to give us a report on it or not, certainly welcome to. Mr. Rohani?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. This is my annual visit to see you folks, as a part of our capital improvement projects that we work every year. We've been working at our fiscal year, two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen capital improvement program. I'm not going to get into details of all of the projects, I just will touch upon some of the more prominent projects, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Over the course of the past year, we've been working on a number of projects that we actually started last year, and, you know, some of them, the design has been completed under construction, and they're rolling into the new fiscal year, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. Our feature project is the Los Gatos Creekside Sports Park, which came to your commission a few months back. That project actually got started two days ago. We finally broke grounds, and construction has begun. We expect to walk through the rest of the spring and summer and fall, and by October, we would have a, hopefully, a good celebration, and we'll invite everybody to come to the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the sports park project. At this campus, there are several projects that I think it's worth mentioning, with the completion of the library last year, one of our projects is the further improvements to the pageant grounds behind us. That park, as you've seen, we did some improvements on the ADA accessibility as a part of the library project. This phase of the project will renovate the remaindering of the pageant ground with some enhanced landscaping. We have to build some retaining walls down below on the roadway, that's, we had some erosion problems that we had encountered. Also, there's been a concept of a pedestrian bridge from the, the plaza deck above us to the pageant ground, to the new ADA ramps that we have built out there. That project has not been designed and has not been funded, but if funding becomes available, that would be a project that would complete the pageant ground improvements in conjunction with our library project. Also, we're going to be working on a library reuse plan, reuse facility, the old library. And as you may know, currently the town is entertaining proposals, concepts from various users who have ideas what to use, or how they want to use the library, the old library. And I think the deadline for that is coming up soon, and after that, there will be an evaluation, and going through a process to see what is the best use for the old library building. As far as our other projects, more transportation-related, I touch upon a couple, couple two, three. One is on Highway Nine and University Avenue. This has been a, speaking of intersections that we're talking earlier tonight, one of our, you know, I could, you call it a least functional intersection, that's actually on a state route, Highway Nine. But we've worked with Caltrans on it. Caltrans really hasn't done anything to improve that intersection for many years. There's a problem with the left turn movements, there is not dedicated left turn, so I'm sure all of us, from time to time, have to go park in the middle of Highway Nine and having to zigzag through traffic. This project would provide, widen the intersection on the university sides a bit to add turning movements, left turn movements, and also improve and fix the ADA accessibility of the corners. One of our challenges is those PG&E poles that are right at the corner, call it the northeast corner of the building, in front of Mr. Lean's building that was mentioned earlier today. There are some large transmission poles that PG&E has, and they have to relocate them for our project. So we've been working with PG&E for months. We're hoping that by summer, they would be done with their relocation, and our project will finish design, and our goal is by summer of two thousand thirteen, we would have that intersection completed. The other project on the north end of the town, on University Avenue, this is a project to build a sidewalk. If you recall during your hearings for the sports park project, there was discussion after the bridge concept went away, how to get folks from Lark to the sports park side safely. This would, there is a pedestrian sidewalk on the west side of La, University, but there's none on the east side. So this will, this project will complete the inner, complete sidewalks on the east side from Lark all the way to driveway entrance to the sports park, so people can have a safe pathway. Also, right in the vicinity, if you've been by, a project that was approved for a CIP last year, Lark and University Signal Construction is going on, and that project should be finished before June of this year. And that's another of less functional intersections that we've had, and the new signal will help its operation greatly. And last, but certainly not least, I wanted to touch upon the project that, again, we talked about a bit earlier tonight at Winchester-Knowles, the intersection improvements that, you know, depending on the outcome of your discussion on, on May, and if the project is approved, we'll be working with applicant on, on the easements on, on Knowles' side to do the widening that we need, and also the intersection improvement with the signal. And, you know, if everything goes according plan, hopefully by late fall, I would say we should be under construction for that project. With that, again, there's many projects that we've been working on, a lot of them are what we call our annual projects, annual curb and gutter replacement, resurfacing, slurry seal, those type of things. Don't want to take too much of your time, but I'll be happy to answer any question you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Rohani. Thank you, Mr. Rohani. Are there any specific questions about any particular items? Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Rohani, I just want to ask about the sports park, because when I drove by today, it looked like the neighboring a commercial business has put up a fence. It's not a fence down the whole driveway, but it, I don't recall it being there before, so I wasn't sure if the neighboring business put it up or we put it up as part of our improvements, and I don't remember seeing it. So, you know what I, you know what I'm talking about, yeah?
The driveway going down the sports-
If you look to the left, there is a, it's kind of a waist-high now fence where the parking lot is for that other business.
I was there today, so I'm trying to recollect.
So that's why, and I saw it myself, and I thought, was that there before? Because we had talked about what you're talking about with the improvements that we continue to do.
Oh, okay. I think I know what you're talking about. So, when you from university turn into the sports park, past the extra space going downhill, this fence is to the left-hand side.
Correct.
It's actually not, I suppose you could call it a fence, but it's a piece of railing, because they-
Railing, that's a better word for it.
Right. They have a retaining wall, and on, it drops off like three, four feet on the backside of it. So, the building department, when they got their permits, they had to put a railing for just safety. But no, it's not a fence. It doesn't go all the way down.
Correct, it does not. And that's why I was thinking about our conversation about this whole project and the safety of the kids coming down off that berm, and then I saw that railing. And I was thinking, is that really what we had decided?
No, no, no. This has nothing to do with that. We have, as a part of another town project earlier this year, we built a sidewalk right from our property line where the sports park began, coming along the driveway, and it just ends right before you get to University Avenue. That project is going to be complemented with the project I just mentioned to pick that up and go all the way to Lark. But I have not forgotten by the discussion we had of doing something for pedestrian enhancements. But that would be along that sidewalk. And really, we have not really pursued it, but that's not, we will come up with something.
All right. And then if I could ask a general question, and because I'm fairly new to the Commission, so I missed your report last year. But I don't see in here any, and maybe it's not the purview of the CIP, but there are many crosswalks that I'm now really aware of that could use those little lights and some kind of a more awareness to the motorists. And one of them actually is in front of this building where Church Street comes out. I see more and more people now crossing there, and I, and I've observed that it's fairly dangerous, but that's, you know, that's one I've observed. But I don't see anything in here for crosswalk improvement. So I'm not sure if that's even part of, when I read the streets part, I noticed that there was nothing in there about improving crosswalks or safety of crosswalks.
Right, correct. There is not a specific project, like you mentioned, for cross, under the heading of crosswalk for various aspects. However, when we do various improvements, improvement projects, like the project we're working on right now on Blossom Hill Road, from Blossom Hill Park all the way to Camino del Cerro, in, past the parks, in the center of construction, that project at Hillbrook is actually going to have a crosswalk, a brand-new crosswalk, with lights and that whole enhancements. So, we generally put those, or look in those opportunities to put crosswalk as part of bigger projects. In and around downtown, just for information, in the past, there's been discussion of lighted crosswalk or more formal crosswalk other than the conventional striping that you see we have on Main Street, on University, and on Santa Cruz. That has not been received well, even though there's been a few discussions about it, but generally, we have not had the support at the council level or at Transportation Commission level. So, basically, yeah, we do not have specific projects for crosswalks, but as we do street improvements, we try to incorporate various type of crosswalks. The lighted crosswalk component that you mentioned, that's something that's a specialty project. We try to discourage what we call the mid-block crossings, because from operational enforcement and maintenance, they can be problematic. Just as example, a few years ago, you may recall, on Highway Nine, when we did our first phase project in conjunction with Monosino Saratoga, the project installed three lighted crosswalks. Two of them was in Saratoga, near the downtown. The other one was at Masal, you know, right crossing Highway Nine. And that was a conventional lighted crosswalk. You push a button, the lights on the street lit up. There has been, over the past few years, since that project got implemented, there were so many breakdowns of those crosswalk systems. They got replaced twice completely. But it's a very sensitive and delicate hardware. As much as you think it's on the roadway and is designed to have car traffic on it, it has a bigger tendency to break down. Now, technology has improved, and we're going to be installing a more, call it a robust and heavy-duty version of it on Blossom Hill Road. But the one on Highway Nine, Caltrans wasn't maintaining it. Town of Los Catos was basically left doing the maintenance and replacement. Ultimately, what we ended up doing last year, when Caltrans did a slurry seal on the, on the section of Highway Nine, they slowly covered up all the solar panels on all those lights. So we had to completely take them out and put beacons, just do every test system. Not a long-winded answer to your question.
Oh, no. Thank you, Mr. Rohani. That's very helpful to know, and I'm just, I'm going to stay on this, because I watched the kids cross on that Masal. I've watched the increase of traffic because of the library crossing at Church and Main Street. And I'm very, very concerned, because it seems to be young families and young people using those two crosswalks. And one is lighted and one isn't, and I see a big difference with the safety.
Right now, with the completion of our Blossom Hill project in Town of Los Catos, we're going to have three lighted crosswalks. One is on Blossom Hill, the brand-new one that we're going to build. One is on Pollard Road, right at Los Catos Woods Townhouse Complex that goes to the Jack Fisher Park in Campbell. That was a joint project, and like we said, a lot of families and young and old use that extensively. And the other one, if we want to call it a lighted crosswalk, is at Masal, but basically have a beacon. So those would be our three one that are currently or will be in service.
Other questions about specific projects in the capital improvement plan for Mr. Rohani? And you're looking at me like it's not specific, but I'm going to ask it. Commissioner Erickson?
There was earlier discussing, Mr. Rohani, about the ingress and egress onto Knowles, and there's a specific project about that. So I presume that I have permission to ask my question from the Chair. My question is, in a situation like that, so potentially in that, given that I have great concern about the safety of Commissioner Talisfor and Commissioner O'Donnell, and they're, when they're coming in and out, and I would like to continue, have both of them be, continue being members of the Commission, and under what circumstances does one put what I would call a passive way to prevent them by putting, I may not be technically correct, but a skinny island, the length of some, you could put a skinny, what I would call a skinny island, the length of Knowles from Capri to Winchester, which would then not, which would then discourage, in a very affirmative way, Commissioner O'Donnell from turning left out of there, out of that, and therefore preserve his health and welfare. So, and when one looks at a project like this, a specific project like this or that specific project, when does one, when does one use the criteria where one would use that kind of a passive, which has no enforcement requirements and so forth? It's a very passive way to manage a driver like Commissioner O'Donnell?
I've done that too, so, it's both of us. I think our approach in cases like that is, maybe we call it a two-tier system. Generally, if we want to go down that path, we would work, whether it's whoever, we will put, make that driveway entrance a right-in, right-out. There would be signage installed. If we monitor that and we see people are not abiding by that, then the concept of a, an island median of sorts, some raised median that would basically prevent, force you not to be able to make the movements. We have not a full-fledged median like what you mentioned, but on Santa Cruz, at near Walgreen and by Chase, those raised, essentially used for the same purpose. A truck can drive over it, probably a sedan would have a little problem crossing over it. But, I mean, that's something that could be entertained. A lot of times, depending on how much space you have, sometime you literally would be a very skinny island, just physically, you know, the curbs back-to-back, one foot wide, as long as there's a barrier. But, yeah, that, something like that would eliminate left turns out of both sides of Knowles.
Other questions about the capital improvement plan? Commissioner Talisfor?
Mine is a little more general, but it really has to do with how often, I have two questions. One leads to another, so I'll ask them both. So, I, just because I know that this is an on, that this is a tool that's really valuable to the town, et cetera, et cetera. How often between 2012 and 17 is the CIP improvement, the plan, you know, reviewed and perhaps augmented or changed? Or is it? I don't know. And the reason I'm asking that is because we've approved some new projects along the Boulevard. And if I recall, there were going to be some changes with the Honda development that's going in some, and I didn't see that in this report. So, my question to, and then there'd be, you know, some other ones down the Boulevard. So, from a budget standpoint, how is money set aside for that? Or is it set aside for that? Or how do you plan for that?
Certainly. Answer your first question. Our CIP programs and our projects and budgets are evaluated here on a yearly basis. So even though I'm presenting you the 2012, 2013 series of projects that are funded, will be funded by the Council, but we look long-range into 2017. Now, next year, things can change. Between now and next year, who knows? Many things can happen. Projects may come online, may go offline. So, it is a living document. We do not, other than the first year, basically, which is funded, the rest of it more is like a planning tool, long-range. So, again, next year, basically throughout the year, again, many conditions change, so we adapt and, you know, go with that. From a perspective of private development project that you mentioned, ala Honda, when projects, private projects, basically, that your Commissioner approves, and they go through process and ultimately gets to the construction phase, they, each of them, they have to do certain things. For instance, Honda has to do some off-site improvements. You might have seen some of the work that they've done on Mitchell, a bunch of sidewalks they had to build as a part of the project you approved. There is median improvements on Los Catos Boulevard. All of that is going to be done by the developer. They bring plans to us review. We go through a check process, but because it's not a town-funded projects, you don't see it in your CIP documents. But, but I have seen, actually, they have their plans for review for their median island improvements in front of their site on Boulevard. But those are done, we review them, but you don't see them here because it's done as a part of their development.
Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Rohani. I don't know if I need to close the public portion of the hearing since we don't have somebody here to talk. Do I? I will. Okay. So, there's, seeing no one in the audience, I'm going to assume nobody wants to talk to us and close the public hearing. Reminding the Commissioners that the scope of our review is to determine whether the capital improvement plan that's been presented to us is consistent with the general plan and the hillside-specific plan. And it's a recommendation to the Town Council, is there a motion? Commissioner Erickson?
I'll move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Town Council approval of the capital improvement projects as presented for the period of 2012, 13, 2016, 17, and find that the projects as presented and reviewed by Mr. Rohani are consistent generally with the general plan of the town and the hillside-specific plan.
Is there a second? Commissioner Talisfor?
And I will second that. It seems to be a very complete report, and I was glad to hear that you do, you know, still review it as it's living. Thank you.
Any questions or discussions regarding the motion? Here we have a motion to recommend approval made by Commissioner Erickson, seconded by Commissioner Talisfor. All in favor?
Aye.
I think I hear that it passes unanimously, so I'll leave the vote at that. Let's see. Is there any report from the Director of Community Development?
No, there's not.
Any Commission matters? Seeing none? That was dramatic, but our meeting is adjourned.